Good evening and welcome to the September 18, 2025 meeting of the Foxborough Board of Appeals. This meeting and the public hearings that we will be conducting is being recorded and broadcast by Foxborough Cable Access. Please note that the board will move into executive session this evening to discuss strategies concerning litigation to which the board is a party, and will adjourn this meeting without returning to open session. Please also note that two of our board members, Lorraine Brew and Eric Hogberg, are participating by Zoom, and because they are participating by Zoom, all votes that will be taken will be by roll call. So the first order of business is to approve the minutes from June 12, 2025. Lorraine or Eric, any questions?
No questions.
Eric, are you there?
I don't see him on.
But we can't hear him.
He's online.
He's online?
He's online, but I don't know if it's, he's just not in front of his computer or something.
Okay.
Chasing his children around.
Hello?
Eric, are you there?
I'm here. Sorry about that.
Do you have any questions or comments on the minutes from the June 12 meeting?
I do not.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve them?
They're moved.
Eric, second? Okay, Lorraine? Again, we have to do this by roll call, yes or no?
Yes.
Eric, yes or no?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Okay, the time being 7:00 PM, Rita Greeley seeks a special permit pursuant to the code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 5.4.2, to allow an addition with a rear yard setback of 23 feet where 30 feet is required, and any such other zoning relief, if any, as the board may determine to be necessary and appropriate. Property is located at 69 Carpenter Street in the R15 Residential District and is not in any restrictive overlay district. Rita, can you come up to the table? And I do expect Kurt to be here. I did get a text from him, he's on his way, but right now it's just Lorraine, Eric, and me.
Hi.
In order to approve the application, our vote has to be unanimous. So why don't you just, if you would, just explain what you're planning, what you're proposing, and we'll have some questions for you, we'll go from there.
The plan is to take my deck and change it into a, it will become a bedroom, a downstairs bedroom with a full bath and a walk-in closet so that I'm able to stay in the house.
And materials that you're planning on utilizing for the addition, are they the same as the house?
Yes.
Okay. Lorraine and Eric, please, you know, jump in with any questions that you might have.
So Barney, when I look at the diagram, it appears to me that it's the same footprint, like it's not going any, I'm afraid I may be missing something. Is the, is there an increase to the non-conformity? That already exists?
No, not in my mind.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why I'm asking if you see it.
No, in fact, I was going to, you know, address that, you know, shortly, but any, any questions that you do have?
That was my only question.
Okay, Eric, any questions?
Sorry, I was muted. No, I don't actually.
Okay. Rita, why do you feel you need a special permit from the board?
Well, I received a letter. I, I had put in, well, my contractor had actually put in for a permit, and then we were told that we needed a special permit.
Okay. Scott, was that Gilhoo? Okay. Section 5.4.2 of the zoning bylaw, which is where the application is under, requires a special permit from this board if an already existing non-conforming structure is going to have an addition, an extension, or an alteration, or a, or a reconstruction, if the existing non-conformity is increased, or if the habitable floor area of the house is increased by 25% or more. As Lorraine indicated, right now, your house is about 22.3 feet from the rear yard line, and that's the only, that's the only non-conformity that exists at this point in time, and you're not, nothing that is proposed will be adding another non-conformity. Because the addition will be not more than 23 feet from the rear yard line, you're not increasing the existing non-conformity. And because the, the habitable floor area of the house, according to the assessor's records, you have 2,100 square feet of living space. That's not quite the same as habitable floor area, it's actually a little bit more. But let's assume that the habitable floor area of your existing house is 2,000 square feet in area. The bedroom itself that you're adding is 237 square feet in area, and the master bath that you're adding is 104 square feet in area. So that comes out to, what, 341. The walk-in closet does not constitute habitable floor area. That's not 25%.
Okay.
25% would be 500. So from my perspective, and I think that's pretty much where Lorraine was going, you're not increasing existing non-conformity, you're not increasing habitable floor area by 25% or more, you don't need a special permit.
Okay, I, unfortunately, yeah, the inspector told us to do this, and it did delay, you know, by a good month of us getting started. So knowing that, we could actually start, well...
Well, you have to go to Mr. Shippey for a building permit, but...
We can, we can start the process next week.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
Okay.
So, just hold on for one second. Lorraine and Eric, do you agree?
I agree.
I, I did the rough math myself, but yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. So I guess what I would request is just to have you request that the application be withdrawn without prejudice.
Okay.
Again, it's on the grounds that a special permit is not, is not needed. I will draft an opinion, it won't have to be filed with the Registry of Deeds. If we, if we were to grant you a special permit, it would have to be filed with the Registry of Deeds. I'm going to draft something anyhow that would indicate that, you know, you did file an application, and we determined that a special permit was not necessary.
Okay.
And that'll be filed with the town clerk, so if anybody has any, you know, question, there will be a written document that we have signed that's on, on record, but it does not need to be filed with the registry.
Perfect. So for, for where I'm at right now, I do, you said I have to, do I have to write something?
No, just request it right now and then...
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so I'm good. Okay, so should I be getting in touch with you?
What will happen is, when he drafts that, that opinion, we will put that in the application as well.
Okay.
So that'll be a permanent document going with that application.
Perfect, okay, yes, all right. And then I'll, as far as getting...
I think you have all the documents that we need, because you have, you supplied, supplied it right here.
All those packets, yeah.
Yeah, but that's what we would need anyway to issue that permit.
Okay.
So, we can, we can file it and stuff like that.
Okay, great.
Before you go there, I should ask if anybody from the public has any questions? Can you tell us, could you come up, tell us who you are, where you live?
I'm her backyard butter, and I just happened to see this. I'm not against your addition any way, shape, or form, don't worry.
And your name?
Huh?
Your name, please?
My name's Ethan Schaaf. I own 13 Church Street, which you back into. And I understand that she's not increasing the non-conformity. I guess what you're saying is she's building over an existing deck.
Yes.
Well, she's taking the deck out.
Right.
And, and building in that area, but, but actually, the, again, the house right now is 22.3 feet from the rear yard line. The addition that she's going to be building will be 23 feet, so the non-conformity is not being increased.
Not being increased. Here's my only comment, because I said I have no problem with your addition, I hope it goes well. The only thing is, and I'm not sure if it's you, but there was always a fence up between our properties, and I'm not positive if it's you, but that fence fell down. And I got a call a long time ago, was it you?
That was me.
Oh, okay, good, nice to meet you.
To let you know.
So I got a call a while ago, asking me to put the fence back up, and I didn't know that it was you, and my response was, it's not my fence, because I had bought the property, and the guy who told me told me it wasn't my fence. So I was just wondering whether as a condition, because you're building upwards, I don't know, it seems to me that in a theoretical sense, she might be increasing the non-conformity a little, because it's a deck, it's an addition versus a deck. So the only request I would ask you, the building inspector, to consider is maybe to put that fence back up.
Well, have you been over there?
Yeah, I own it.
Mason, I know, but I put 13 abavaides trees instead of a fence. I, I bought, I paid for, and I had them put in by, a, the tree company in the town, she's, I can't remember the name, but anyways, they came, and I had them plant 13 beautiful abavaides, so there's a living fence.
Oh, there is? Because I've, I've been there, and I've sort of never noticed that, maybe I'm looking in the wrong direction, but if you're saying there's an existing fence, and it's a natural fence...
It goes up this and goes like this, it's beautiful. So, yeah, I didn't want another fence that could eventually fall down.
Fall down again. All right, well, my mistake, I've never known, this is not a property I live at, it's, I have tenants there.
Okay.
And I live on Cape Cod, so it's hard for me to maybe notice everything.
Yeah, I had them put in a year ago.
Okay, okay, a year ago.
You're satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Okay, there's nothing...
I'm good, I'm good. There's no sense duplicating your effort, I thank you for that.
They look beautiful.
It's nice to have, well, you're not a neighbor, but in a sense you are. Nice to meet each other.
Well, I did speak to somebody that works closely with you, because there was, yeah, when I had, somebody got in touch with me.
Okay.
And, and he came over, and I spoke with him.
Well, thank you for that, like I said, I, I've been there within the recent past, and I guess I just never noticed it, but thank you for doing that.
All right.
Okay, so you've made the request to withdraw, so I'm gonna need a motion to approve the withdrawal of the application without prejudice.
Motion to approve the withdrawal of the application without prejudice.
Eric, second? Okay, Lorraine, again, is it roll call vote? Lorraine?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So again, I'll draft something, you can start with Mr. Shippey.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the time being 7:10 PM, the Town of Foxborough DPW requests a variance pursuant to the code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 4.0, Table 4.1.1, to allow 85 feet of, of street frontage where 200 feet is required, to construct a PFAS facility on the lot, and any such other zoning relief as the board may determine to be necessary and appropriate. Property is located at 11 Lamson Road in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District, and a Zone 2 Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Mr. Gallagher?
Good evening.
Good evening, and I'm not gonna let you withdraw, I tried, I find a reason, but I couldn't, so...
That's right, we're here, so, just by way of introduction, my name's Chris Gallagher, I'm the Director of Public Works here in Foxborough. With me, Brian Weiner, with Tyon Bond, who's been the design project manager for this project. We, as the public hearing notice said, we're seeking a variance for the frontage on, on Lamson Road, and our second PFAS water treatment plant. Some background, we are currently under construction for our first water treatment plant down on Pumping Station Road. These PFAS treatment plants are required by EPA and DEP. This, this plant down on Lamson Road will be the second that will go under construction. The first one should be done early spring, with this one starting at about the same time. So we have funding through the State Revolving Fund, we are working against some of their deadlines to get all of our permitting in place, both local, between Planning Board, Conservation, Zoning, as well as several state agencies for their permits as well. So we're here tonight, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brian for details and to walk through exactly what we're looking for.
Good evening, again, I'm Brian Weiner, Civil Engineer with Tyon Bond, we've been working with the, the Town Department of Public Works and Water Department over the past year for this Oak Street project, and we're fortunate to get funding to do the PFAS removal project. So, before, before you're here tonight, 11 Lamson Road, it's a large parcel, and I can walk you through the property and the reason that we're here. The main reason we're here, it's a 61.8 acre parcel. The existing treatment plant is, is over at this location, the proposed building for PFAS removal is, is over here. Lamson Road runs through the property, this is an unaccepted town roadway, and so we're meeting the setbacks for front, rear, and side yard for the new PFAS building. We've received approval from the Planning Board for the proposed work scope, which is the, the building, associated pavement, and grading, and I'll show you in more detail on another page. But the, the key reason we're here is because this is an unaccepted town roadway, the actual frontage is over here at Oak Street, and this small area over here at Oak Street is 85 feet, whereas the regulations, specifically Section 4, Table 4.1, require 200 feet of frontage. And so we're seeking a variance for 85 feet of frontage. This is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, so very similarly, back in 2011, when the existing treatment plant was constructed, and here's a close-up of the existing treatment plant, when this was constructed, there was a variance granted at that time, which we attached to the application, it was Decision 11-01, March 17, 2011, and so we're seeking the same variance for the project that's before you tonight. A little bit more detail is, here's the proposed PFAS building. Again, we went through the Planning Board's special permit approval, here's the existing treatment plant building, and so this is just an extension of the existing facility. We've run out of one building into the new building through a filtration system, and then back to the treatment plant to continue as it does today. But I'm happy to answer any questions, it's a unique property in that it has this unaccepted roadway running through it, and the frontage is actually here at Oak Street. Happy to answer any questions and...
The, the existing facility and this one, are they connected by pipes, or the buildings themselves are not connected?
Yeah, I can show you on the next plan exactly, there's ductal iron, we call it yard piping, so just like a typical water main, we, we have piping that runs out the back of the existing building, runs to the new plant, and then runs back.
Underground, I presume, right?
Yeah, yeah, so when, when you're out there, this, this whole area that's still, still grass, still paved, it'll be exactly the same, everything's underground.
Now, the, the site itself, the, you know, the property itself, just describe, you know, what's there, I know there are wetlands there, and I think there's standing water in some locations and...
Yeah, so the, the Rumford River runs through the property, basically runs from up here, near the Town of Sharon, and kind of runs through this wetland system, goes underneath the existing roadway, and makes its way through the property from north to south. There's, you know, but, watering vegetated wetland that is also on the property. It's not super easy to see on the scale of this plan, but all, all these, these hatched areas, these are, are wetland areas.
Just thought I could, one quick question I have, so this is, this is an unaccepted road, you said, it's a paved road.
It, it's paved, it looks, it looks exactly like a normal road, everything, it has a, I'll show you on the next...
Kurt and I are in a sense...
Page.
We're neighbors almost, but...
Yeah, there's a right-of-way line here, it, it's, everything would lead you to believe it's, it's a typical roadway until you find out it's unaccepted.
Right.
Going back through the history of the property, and so that's what has us before you tonight, is because of the frontage.
Yeah, so my question is just out of curiosity here, that if this was an accepted roadway, would...
We wouldn't be here, because we'd have, we'd have the frontage on Lamson Road.
I mean, it's more or less a driveway to get to the...
It's a pretty big driveway, yeah, it's a road-sized driveway, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
What specifically are, are the chemicals, and what, what are the problems, I know these are colloquially called, you know, forever chemicals, but...
Yeah, so we're, we're removing PFAS, which, which is a contaminant. Over the years, they've lowered the threshold on treatment limits, and what the changes to the regulations over the past so many years, and going forward, there's contaminants that you're above the limit, and then you have a period of time to come in compliance. And so, you know, even five years ago, you, you were perfectly in compliance, it's not that the levels have changed, it's just that the regulations have changed, and they're just more stringent now.
So the, yeah, the series of the PFAS chemicals, we currently test for six of them, that's the requirement. There are, I think there are up to like 8,000 of these chemicals that are known as PFAS. They're found in a lot of, a lot of items, all that, like Teflon coating, Gore-Tex, microwave popcorn bags having in it, the, the chemicals, what happens is they don't break down. So once they enter the groundwater, they're there, and all of our ground, all of our wells in Foxborough, where we pull our water from, are in the ground. So as, you know, we know that the Witch Pond well site is more contaminated with this chemical in the ground than, you know, these other two locations, most likely because it's downstream from the Plainville landfill. So all that trash, everything that's been seeping into the ground is now finding its way, kind of in plumes underground into our wellfields. So this is just another site where we're not sure where it came from, we're not sure how it got in the ground.
It's there.
Foxborough has a lot of septic systems in town, which, you know, may be part of the contributing factor, is that we're just putting this, these contaminants back in the ground, every time you wash a non-stick pan, or, you know, wash a rain jacket, or something like that, we're just putting it right backward into the ground. So we have gone through a series of litigation and trying to, we've, you know, been part of multi-district litigation to sue the big producers of this stuff, we're seeing some funding come back from those, those lawsuits, certainly not enough to handle what we're looking at here, but that's kind of where the PFAS chemicals come from, and, you know, like, like Brian said, a couple years ago, EPA set a limit of 70 parts per trillion, mass DEP changed that to reduce it down to 20 parts per trillion, and then recently EPA came back around and said, well, we wanted it four. So now we're, we're removing the PFAS to a, a level of four parts per trillion, which, you know, most of the chemical industry can't actually test to that limit, but that's where we're going. So these, these plants will produce, you know, certainly a level of clean water that all of our surrounding communities and across the United States are having to deal with, but it'll be, you know, the cleanest of the clean, once we're done.
So the, the process we're adding, it's granular activated carbon, it absorbs the contaminant, there's no, no new chemical addition, it's just filtration only.
Okay. Lorraine and Eric, any questions?
Barney, the, the fact that there's a pipe connecting these two buildings doesn't affect this, this request?
I, I don't think so. I think if the buildings were attached in any, any fashion, I would definitely say yes.
Truly?
And then you wouldn't need a variance, probably a special permit, but, but I think just because of the pipes...
Yeah, there's, there's...
I didn't do enough research to, to feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, there's, there's existing infrastructure that already passes beneath the Lamson Road right away to get to the well building that's, that's located over here, and there's also electric infrastructure that passes across it, as well as some existing water mains.
That was my only question, Barney.
We're, we're, we're adding to it with more piping.
Eric, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I thank you for providing the detailed explanation.
Yeah.
Scott, any?
No.
Okay, any others?
No other questions.
So let me have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Lorraine, second?
Second.
Okay, and I gotta do it by roll call, so Kurt?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So, you know, the, the decision back in 2011, and none of us were on the board then, so, whoever, and I'm pretty sure, pretty sure I know who drafted it, did a great job of explaining what was going to happen, and didn't say anything about why a variance was, you know, was, was appropriate and warranted. So, so we've got that burden right now. So, the way I look at it is this, you, number one, you have a uniquely shaped lot, and it's comprised of wetlands, you've got bog area, you've got the river running through it, there's probably open water on there, and, you know, obviously various wells on the site, and of course, the existence of the, you know, the chemicals, you know, in the water. Now, the chemicals probably exist in water elsewhere in town, but combined with the fact that this is uniquely shaped, you know, piece of property, you certainly meet that first criteria of, of needing a variance, which is, you know, shape, topography, or soil conditions. As far as the second criteria, you know, again, you've got a unique shape of property such that its frontage can only be on, on Oak Street, so the frontage obviously is limited in, in that respect. And literal enforcement of the bylaws' frontage requirements would cause substantial hardship to the town, because we wouldn't be, we'd be depriving ourselves of the opportunity to clean the water and provide a safe drinking supply to, to town residents. And finally, not only would granting the, the variance not be detrimental to the public good, nor substantially derogate from the general welfare of town residents, it's going to be promoting the health and welfare of town residents, again, by providing a safe water supply. So notwithstanding the fact that our brethren back in 2011 didn't explain that, I think that's what, what they had in mind with respect to, to that particular facility, so for, for those reasons, I think you clearly meet the, the variance criteria. Kurt?
I agree, and no other questions.
Okay, Lorraine and Eric?
I agree, no questions.
Okay, I, I would have though, two, two conditions. One, that the facility and whatever other improvements to the, to the property you're making ought to be constructed in accordance with the specifications in your plans, and the facility itself be located as shown in those plans. And second, the DPW is to obtain such determinations, orders, or permits relating to the construction of the facility from the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board, as may be required. I know you've got it from the Planning Board already.
Yep.
But I think the Conservation Commission is still, still outstanding?
Yeah, there's a public hearing on Monday, theoretically, we can close the meeting if we...
we get a number from DEP.
Okay, so that is a second condition, that you, you know, obtain those authorizations. So I need a motion to approve with those conditions.
Motion to approve with the condition stated.
Second, Lorraine?
Second.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. So I'll draft something. What are your deadlines?
So we have a loan submission deadline, October 3rd. The intent is to submit all permits. I know there's an appeal period, and takes time to write it if it's available, that's amazing, if it's not, we would take a draft.
We should have it written and signed and filed with the town clerk sometime next week. I'm gonna make this a priority. So once Diana files it with the town clerk, that's what, go to kick off the 20-day period, and then, as you know, you've got to file it in the registry of deeds, so you're probably not gonna be able to get all that done, you know, with the appeal period by October, by the beginning of October, but it's gonna be relatively soon after. At least you'll have a written decision that's been filed locally, so...
Yeah, the written decision would, in my opinion, would meet the requirement.
Okay, if you need anything else, Chris, just let me know.
Sounds good.
See what we're gonna do.
Excellent.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the time being 7:20, Jeffrey Keith seeks a special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Chapter 275 zoning, Section 5.4.2, to allow the reconstruction, extension, or alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family residential structure by the construction of an addition that will cause the habitable floor area of the structure to exceed by 25% or more the habitable floor area of the existing structure, and any such other zoning relief as the board may determine to be necessary and appropriate. Property is located at 12 Oak Street in the R40 Residential and Agricultural District, is not located in any restrictive overlay district. And again, Frank, I couldn't find any reason to say, "You don't have to worry about it, you don't need an application, you don't need a special permit."
No, I think we're just barely over the 25% on this one. Thank you, Attorney Frank's playing here with the applicants, Jeffrey and Kristen Keith. They're the property owners of 12 Oak Street. 12 Oak Street is located in the R40 zoning district. It's about six houses in from the intersection of Mechanic Street and Oak Street, Beverly's Drive. It's also in Zone 2 of the Water Resource Protector, Overlay Protection District. Again, the owners are requesting a special permit under Section 5.4.2 to allow the reconstruction, extension, or alteration of a non-conforming single-family residential structure, with the habitable floor area of approximately 881 square feet currently, and they want to increase it by 25% or more, and it will be 1,874 square feet of area. So it's an increase of approximately 113%, or an increase of 993 square feet. The lot, which is right up, which is the existing conditions plan, is pre-existing non-conforming, because the lot contains 15,500 square feet of area, where 40,000 square feet of area is required under Table 4-1. Also, 60,000, though, is required within Zone 2 of the Water Resource Protection District. So this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. When it was originally built back in the 50s, 15,000 square feet was the requirement with 100 feet of frontage. And it has 100 feet of frontage on Oak Street, where 200 feet is required. The front yard setback, as indicated on the plan, is 22 feet, where 35 feet is required, and the lot width is only 100 feet approximately, where 134 feet is required. Again, they want to increase the habitable floor area in the house to 1,874 square feet. Again, the build, the house was originally built in 1955, it currently is a three-bedroom. You'll see in the plans where it says two bedrooms and an office, that office is really a bedroom, but his two children are out of the house, one of them's still in college, and the other one's out, so they've been using it as an office, and will be using it as an office. Because it's in Zone 2 of the Water Resource Protection District, it has to remain a three-bedroom. So the addition could add another bedroom, so it has to stay a three-bedroom under the Water Resource Protection District. The addition is to add a living area for Kristen's mother, Beverly Kelly, who lives in town. Mr. Kelly passed away a few years ago, she wants to stay in town, this is just another way for her to stay in there. I think we gave you plans with our filing that showed the existing house and the existing layout, and the proposed house, and a proposed floor plan and layout. One thing you know is, you'll see that the teaching field, the apartment after this area, the addition moved over to there, so they're gonna have to relocate the whole septic system. So this was something that they really had to think about inside, it was in their best interest and Beverly's best interest, because it is a significant amount to move that, as well as putting the addition on. In there, you'll see that they're gonna be redoing the whole outside of the house redone, so it'll all look uniform, it'll all blend in. You can see they're putting a back deck in there, so it all looks good. The setback from the front yard isn't gonna change, the addition, specifically the garage that's gonna be added, is gonna be not any closer than the existing house, so we didn't need any kind of finding with regard to that. Originally, they were gonna try to bring the garage even with the house, which would have gotten it a little closer, but once they worked with the architect, they wanted to step back for aesthetic reasons, as well as to keep it, the setback, the same. So the requirements for a special permit under Section 542, as I know the board knows, is that the reconstruction, extension, and alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in which the structure is located. It authorizes, Section 1041 authorizes the board to grant the special permit after considering certain criteria and determining that the adverse effect of the proposed use will not outweigh the beneficial impact to the town or the neighborhood, and there are certain factors to be considered. One is community needs serviced by the proposal. The property will continue to be privately owned and used as a single-family home, so no specific community needs will be addressed, but again, this will be providing additional area in the household for the mother, mother-in-law to join them, so it's another way of taking care of, and it'll open up another home for someone else to move into town. Second criteria is traffic flow and safety, parking and loading. Again, the addition and the garage will not present any traffic or safety issues, will have no impact on the natural environment either. Utilities and other public services, they exist on the site already, and since it's being serviced by the utilities and the public services, water, et cetera, that neither additional garage will require any additional ones of that nature. Again, the impact on natural environment, and also potential economic and fiscal impact for the town. The neighborhood character will stay the same. The proposed addition and garage will actually result in an improved look on the house, updated, and look better. If you look around the neighborhood, you can see where all the houses around that area, or the majority of them, have had additions put on, or enlarged at one time or another. Additionally, the economic and fiscal impact will be, you know, increased property taxes, assessment from this property, as well as fees that the town will gain from building permits, et cetera. Again, we're asking for a special permit to increase the habitable floor area by more than 25%. For it, we don't feel that there's any detrimental impact to the neighborhood, and as a matter of fact, will be an improvement, and it'll be benefited to the town and the neighborhood, considering the characteristics of the neighborhood, the town, and the site. If you have any questions with regard to the site or the proposed addition, you're more than welcome.
Kurt, any questions?
So it looks like it's gonna be basically two units.
No, it's one unit, it's not an ADU.
Okay, that's all Nelson's... Okay, all right.
You know, it's all right up here, and you'll see, there's a proposed garage here, this is more than 900 when they first came to me, they were thinking of that, and I said it's too large. So they'll be limited in what they can put in the living area, they'll have a refrigerator in there and a sink, but more than likely, there won't be a stove or an oven, and maybe a microwave to heat things up. So it's not an additional living area, it's part of the house. So it's not an ADU.
Nope.
And again, it's still gonna be a three-bedroom, it's a three-bedroom now, it's gonna be a three-bedroom after the addition.
Lorraine, any questions?
No questions, Barney.
Okay, Eric, any questions?
Yeah, just with reference to the two, and, sorry, the three bedrooms, the current plan shows, if I'm reading it correctly, two bedrooms with an office, is that, and then you're just adding a bedroom and keeping that an office? I'm just trying to figure out what it is now versus what it's actually gonna be.
Currently, the septic system is for a three-bedroom, so there are three bedrooms in there. You can convert one of the bedrooms to an office, so on the existing layout, it showed office, just because they just kept it, but on the addition, on the plan showing the addition, there'll be an additional one-bedroom there, and one of the bedrooms in the front is gonna be converted to an office, because you're limited in the Water Resource Protection District how many bedrooms you have, and so this is the most they can have on that lot, so they couldn't add a fourth bedroom.
So the existing plan that I'm looking at, it shows office, that's just what the future office location will be.
Correct, it should say future office, and they wrote existing office.
Just trying to clarify that, thank you. And my other question is about any input from neighbors, I'm not sure if anyone's here, or if you've spoken with anybody in regard to this proposal.
I've spoken to Dan Bata, the neighbor to the right, Derek, the neighbor to the left, and Sunday evening, we actually spoke with Kimberly, who is getting ready to embark on a similar endeavor with her mom, and they were all in support.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I've passed by this, whether it's walking or driving, probably a million times, so I'm familiar with the house. So basically, the garage is gonna be where your carport is.
Yeah, and it's only coming out like another foot and a half, so it's like a glorified one-car garage, almost.
You'll have to take the basketball net down, I guess, unless you keep it in the garage. Okay, any other questions? Okay, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Barney?
Second.
I do have one question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, Scott.
How much of impervious surface is gonna be covered on this lot? Is it less than 15%?
I don't know that.
Because that's one of the requirements in Zone 2, is you can't cover more than 15% or 2,500 square feet, whichever's greater. Trust me, I've been in that a lot, Frank, lately, so I don't think it is.
I don't think so.
It doesn't appear to be.
It doesn't look, I just did quick numbers, and it doesn't appear that it's going to be.
Yeah.
So, I'm good, I just wanted to get...
I don't know the numbers, I think I was told we're okay, but I don't wanna swear by that.
Yeah, I think you're gonna be fine, I really, I do.
Scott, when you're saying 15%, you're saying the entire house with the addition, correct?
Correct, correct. The existing house right now does not even come close to your 15%.
I mean, you're, you said, Frank, what, 1,874 would be the...
Yes.
Because that would be habitable, not gross, but...
Yeah, but I think it'd be close to that, because the existing house doesn't have, you know, much closet space, you know, and I think she included like the existing bathroom, things like that, so I don't think there's a lot that was left out. But, yeah, I would...
It's in Zone 2, correct?
Yeah, it's Zone 2, yeah.
I mean, 15% would be 2,300.
Yeah, 2,300, 2,500.
Yeah, so I think he's...
I think he's good.
I think he's good, yeah.
I think so, too.
So we had a motion to close the public portion, and Lorraine, did you second it?
Sorry.
Yes, I did.
Okay, so Kurt?
Yes.
And Lorraine?
Yes.
And me, yes. So, you know, Frank, I think you explained why the requirements for a special permit are satisfied, there's really nothing I can add to that. So, you know, it would have three conditions, and the first would be that the location of the proposed addition on the property be as shown on the certified plot plan from Bay Colony, and comply with the front, rear, and side yard setbacks that are shown in that, in that plot plan. Second, that the proposed addition is to contain approximately 992.31 square feet of habitable floor area, and is to be designed and constructed in accordance with the, with these plans. And the third is that the exterior materials of the proposed addition and of the existing dwelling be of comparable architectural-type materials and color, which is reflected in the plans. Okay, anything else?
Is it gonna be a different color?
No, it's gonna be yellowy-bash.
Because they're redoing the...
Barney, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Where there are four bedrooms actually here, does there have to be anything filed that limits it to three?
Is anything to be filed?
Does anything have to be filed?
Well, I mean, the plans will be part of the decision.
To limit it to three?
But...
When they go to do the...
The septic, yeah.
You're gonna limit it...
Close to the Health Department.
Yeah.
And you're sure you can move the septic, has that been...
That's what the civil engine is.
That's what Bay Colony said when, that was the first question, because I like to back into things.
I think that's why this wasn't here three months ago.
Right, yeah.
Barney, I'm asking because I'm just remembering when I was in a similar situation, that because there were, there was gonna be a limit in the number of bedrooms because of the septic, it had to be filed as part of the deed.
At times, the Board of Health requires you to put a document on record saying, you know, the structure's limited to two bedrooms. It's a notification for future buyers, more than anything else, so the buyer, you know, says, "Well, I was told I could, you know, put two more bedrooms on." "Oh, they told you that," you know, is wrong. So they may or may not require this. This is not gonna be a new system, it's just gonna be a repair, so I'm not sure if it's gonna be required, but if it is, that's not a problem, we have no problem putting that on.
Okay, so, any other conditions? So, motion to grant the special permit with those three conditions?
Motion to grant special permit with conditions stated.
Okay, Lorraine, second?
Second.
Okay, again, Kurt?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. When do you expect to start construction?
Probably March.
You'll see Barney walk by.
Right.
He'll be watching you, all right?
Thank you very much.
So, if you ever have any questions, come out front. I'm usually, they're around 10:30.
Thank you.
Look at that mechanic.
Have they fixed the lights on the mechanic yet?
They didn't when I came down today.
I don't know, just flashing all day.
You know, there was a police car there for a good chunk of the morning, but, yeah. Look.
Good night.
Okay, we need to have a motion to proceed to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to ongoing litigation to which the board is a party that may have a detrimental effect to the board's position in such litigation and to adjourn without returning to open session. So, I need, that is a motion.
So moved.
And Lorraine, would you second that?
Second.
Okay. Lorraine, are you going to hang on or are you going to jump off?
If I can jump off?
Eric, you're gonna stay with us, correct?
Yes, I can stay.
Okay.
Okay.
So, let me, we've got the motion made and seconded. Kurt?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
And Barney, yes. Eric, hang in for a couple of minutes. She's gotta do something. You'll be sort of offline and then back online in a couple of minutes.
All right, as long as I don't have to do anything, I'll stick right here.
If you do, we'll call you.
Thank you.
All right, sounds good.
Have a good night.